Could you sign in, please? Could you sign the sheet? That's okay.
Okay, we will call the regular city council meeting to order. February fourteenth, 7:00 PM, roll call.
David Paradise.
Nicole Andrioff.
Kirby Moyno.
Tom Marslick.
Sam Solars.
Jessica Bonniewell.
Jared Bogey.
Chuck Smallwood.
Michael Sommerfeld.
invocation Pastor Paul Baker.
Well, first I want to apologize, the last time I was supposed to be here, I didn't get here on time. So I almost didn't make it tonight either because my battery is dead on time, so maybe it's uh...
It's that time of year. We're glad you're here, Paul.
Yes. Anyway, I just started out with a little humor because, you know, meetings like this, sometimes you need it, right? So I'm from probably the most North Ridge area in North Dakota originally, so we tell them where we do. You know, Ole and Lena, right? And it says, hey, my two specialties are peach cockler and roast beef and ole. Well, which one is this? And then I usually follow the setup with a joke about how ole die if you don't... So, okay. Hey, Lord, we thank you so much. And it's come together, pray that we could do our best for you, for the community of Montrose, and for each other. It's you that, you gave us two ears and only one mouth. So I think there's a message in that. Help us to listen to each other and to learn from each other as we seek to do our very best for you and this community. In your name we pray.
Yep, amen. Thanks, Paul. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, approval of the agenda. I would like to add an item E under new business, ugly bar discussion, instead of open forum. It's the only thing I have. So I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. So moved.
I will second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'll second. Further discussion? Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Wright County sheriffs.
Well, Deputy Doll is certainly in a better position to answer any questions that the council may have. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for having us. Thank you for having me. Mayor and I were talking at one of the recent mayor association meetings, and he thought it was about time that I stopped by and impart some words of wisdom, and I don't know exactly what that might take, but certainly be able to answer any questions you might have. I think just real briefly, we're certainly facing some challenges. If you consider the last couple of years in law enforcement and the narrative that's been across the state, across the nation. First of all, I couldn't be more thankful to be serving in Wright County. We are very blessed, as bad as things seem to be across our nation and even our state. We've had an abundance of outpouring of support from our community. And I think I give a lot of credit, I'm blessed, because I get to speak to several civic groups and people all the time. And I give credit where credit is due. We've got several generations of sheriffs and leaders that have served the community well. We do a good job of hiring people and truly having that message of being servants to the community, that's what's first, and being responsive to the community and the needs of the community. And I think that it's respect, and that relationship is a two-way street, and we understand the importance of that. So I think we're very blessed. But certainly, come this spring, we're going to lose about the third graduating class or the majority of the third graduating class of new recruits. So far, I think that Wright County, we've been a little bit blessed. We've had various things across the metro agency where people are looking, whether it's corrections or the license side of things. We've hired a number of experienced, both deputies and corrections officers in the Manhattan County, Ramsey County, Dakota County area, that we're looking to make a change. A, because they recognize the support that we have, certainly of conservative nature. We have a county board that, I believe, has done a good job of navigating the pandemic. Obviously, they get hit from every side and all sides with all kinds of information, but I think they've done a relatively good job of navigating those waters. We've certainly seen that. You know, given the fact that if you look at Minneapolis, PD, St. Paul PD, and the State Patrol, there's probably more openings in those three agencies than we have qualified recruits in the entire state. Last week when I looked, there were sixty-two law enforcement agencies advertising openings on the Minnesota Cool Line. And so I believe that that gives us information of what we can be facing. And probably like never before have I seen in my career where law enforcement officers from across the state are taking early retirements in a year under fifty-five. We take a five percent penalty. We can't retire prior to fifty, but we can actually retire at fifty. But it's a five percent penalty per year under fifty-five. And so there's a lot of folks that are deciding at that fifty-two year, fifty-three year mark that they're going to take that ten or fifteen percent penalty, and they're out. And can't blame them. In today's market, I think you can look at mental health, both from an officer perspective or a deputy perspective, going to these crazy calls. But society as a whole, you know, there's lots of societal factors that have gone into it. We're at the scene of a suicide right now in another area of the county. I think we probably have three or four again in the last couple of days. And so we continue to deal with that. A baby died this last week in Montsolo Township. So those things are pretty hard to deal with, and we continue to do that. We don't always meet people on their best day, and you know, we're human too. So we still earn that weight of the world on our shoulders. And you couple that with all the instability across the nation and baby lack of support. You've got to turn off the local news and the national news and even social media because it's sometimes just hard to swallow. We know the job that we do, we know the impact that we make, but sometimes that noise is still a burden out there. So that's probably all I really have for you. I'm always here. It's interesting, how long have you been doing the pages? Do you know, it's been about the last couple of years, if you're identifying everyone up to speak out some meetings?
Yeah, about two years, I think.
That was one of the consistent messages that I received is actually deputies showing up at city council meetings. So I'm glad that that's been an integral part of the last couple of years, so we're able to answer questions. And we certainly want to be responsive to you. Really don't have an update as far as the cities of Montrose and Waverly. We continue to work very well together, sharing the contract. Montrose has the, you know, the larger burden of that, and we spend a little bit more time in Montrose for that. There might come a time, obviously, all the cities are growing, there might come a time where I would approach the city councils. So two years ago now, we moved to a ten-hour schedule versus an eight-hour schedule. The last contract was based on that eight-hour schedule. Doesn't necessarily mesh very well, but I'm going to show you, I'm going to be able to show you a need before I just say, hey, we went to a ten-hour schedule. Worked way better if you guys pointed up a couple more hours. But given the growth that the county has seen, I've approached Montsolo, Outsego, Elbeville, St. Michael, and Delano, all three increases in coverage starting January one, a year from now, 2023. We can see upwards of an additional eight deputies just because of contract increases. So I would imagine in the next couple of years that I would approach the cities of Montrose, Waverly to increase. And it's not going to be very big, but if we could get to the twenty-hour instead of the sixteen-hour one, I would fit real nicely into it with a ten-hour schedule. But really, you're very copacetic. I think I ran a report before I came here, about three hours is it, three hours ago in the last thirty days, there's been seventy-four, seventy-six calls per service, something like that. So I'm pretty copacetic right now, I don't think, I didn't see anything in the last thirty days that would, that jumped off the page on me to report to. But certainly, any questions, I'll be here, and that's it. Thanks for having me, Mayor.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Absolutely. Thanks, Governor.
Yeah, I got a few stats here. I'm Deputy Dollar of Wright County. I'm assigned Montrose and Waverly. I gathered stats since the last council meeting on January tenth. Since then, we've had two hundred and twenty-nine calls per service. Of those seventy were traffic stops, and we had eleven citations. Of the two hundred and twenty-nine calls for service, ninety-five were ICRs, which meant just involved more further investigation, more time. We've had six in custody arrests, two were court order violations, two had drug involvement, and two were DUIs. Other than that, we haven't had any trending problems right now, nothing of, no, that I can think of. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council report.
Let's see, council meeting, you have the League of Minnesota Cities Leadership Meetings, firefighter dinner, and the Lions Breakfast.
City Council Leadership Conference, firefighters dinner, Montrose Days Committee, and Lions Breakfast.
The council meeting, the two-day council training, a webinar on land use, a couple personnel meetings, and the fireman's dinner.
I had a city council meeting, two engineering meetings with Boltman Mink, Wright County Commissioners Meeting, Wright County Commissioners Workshop. And I'd like to make a couple comments about that workshop. There was an organization there this month or this week from Restore Minnesota. Dale Wetherington is the chaplain for state legislature, and our congressman Joe McDonald was there. And the main thrust of the, what?
State rep.
State rep, I'm sorry, yeah. Our, the main issue they were talking about was voter integrity. And you know, Wright County has about ninety-two thousand voters roughly. And out of the ninety-two thousand voters, the last election, there were forty-eight thousand absentee votes because, absentee ballots because of COVID. As of November twenty-ninth of 2020, there were twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-six ballots that were not linked to actual voters. Now, by January thirty-first, they got that number whittled down to about four hundred and sixty-six ballots that they couldn't associate with a voter. And that just so happens to match up to the state law requirement of no more than one-half percent error in ballots. So you can take that for what it's worth, but the whole thing was that they want to work together with the commissioners to try to tighten up voter integrity. So then I had a, after that, I had a Montrose, Waverly Chamber of Commerce meeting, and then two Personnel Committee meetings.
And Council Planning and Zoning and the League of Minnesota Cities Conference. Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet is the activity report for January of this year. If there's any questions I can address, it's all generated. Next item is, I need a motion to accept Roy Henry, also known as Coco, onto our Fire Department effective one thirteen of twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to accept Coco or Roy Henry Jr. as a firefighter effective January thirteenth, 2022. I'll second. Further discussion? Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion passes five zero.
Then I just want to go over some awards that we recognized in firefighters at our dinner on February fifth. We pinned three firefighters who got off of probation, which means they've been here for over two years. Those were Diane Holman, Joseph Price, and Zachary Walters. And then every year, we recognize the top responders in our department. Anybody who responds to over sixty percent gets recognized with a certificate. Those people this year were Kelly Stoll with sixty-one percent, Willie Bowerschmidt for eighty-four percent, Joseph Ontoma for seventy-five percent, Michael Markkinen for seventy-six percent, and Diane Holman for ninety-seven point zero percent.
Oh.
And then every year, we also recognize the firefighter of the year. Firefighters can let the nomination committee know the people. And then it's not just by based off a percentage or this, that, or the other thing. It's kind of an interesting thing that we have. It's basically us recognizing somebody important in our department. This year's firefighter of the year, or last year's firefighter of the year, went to Diane Holman, not only for getting ninety-seven percent of calls, but clearly new firefighter, she's gone diving into this. She's very well-liked, very well-trusted on the department. And if I give her anything, it'll be done one hundred and ten percent of the way without me ever having to even blink an eye at it. So she was awarded the firefighter of the year for twenty twenty-one. And I'd also like to thank everybody who attended the relief dinner on the fifth. We had a great turnout, a record turnout actually, for the dinners and stuff. So it was very well-attended and very well-liked from everybody that I heard from.
It's probably the best prime rib I've had at that dinner.
I heard that, yeah.
All right, that's all I have.
Any other questions for Kevin?
EDA.
Yeah, we had a meeting with the EDA on the nineteenth, and basically, welcome two new members to the EDA Economic Development Authority. One is Matt Smith, who's the branch manager at Carpentry Contracting Company, and Rob Kirkpatrick, who has the Minnesota German Auto Works here on Highway Twelve. We're working with several developers on multiple pieces of land to build single-family housing and possible rental townhomes. These processes are moving along, and we anticipate a strong spring in Montrose. You may have heard rumors or been aware of the fact that the construction crew out at Subway site have left the site with no explanation. So we are still attempting to get a meeting with them to understand what issues they had and what caused them to cease moving forward. So we have yet to receive a response from them. So, and then on the table, you'll find there's several updated EDA flyers that we hand out to interested business owners that may be looking to move into the Montrose area.
Personnel.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Included in your packet for this evening, I received Mr. Wayne McCormick's resignation, which is effective March thirty-first, 2022. I would just need a motion this evening to accept his resignation at this time. The Personnel and Employee Development Committee is currently working with the union on a plan for hiring, and we'll be discussing the hiring and job posting at the February twenty-eighth, 2022 special city council meeting.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Wayne McCormick effective March thirty-first.
I will second. Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. And we also put together a updated job description and everything for when we seek new, somebody new to fill that position. So, planning and zoning.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, city council and staff, February ninth, 2022. At our meeting, we had a public hearing for the North Ridge Sixth Edition. There was some discussion and concerns. We passed it with recommendations from Mr. Gritman, the city engineer and commissioners. Biggest thing was drainage and trees. But looking forward to the further development.
Okay, preliminary plat application for the North Ridge Sixth Edition.
As Commission Chair Smallwood mentioned, we held a public hearing on February ninth regarding the preliminary plat for North Ridge Sixth. As noted in the planner's report, that's included in your packet this evening, this development proposal for a twenty-seven home meets the standard R1 zoning requirements. The only issue that will need to be resolved within the developer's agreement is the tree replacement problem of the developer taking more than fifty percent of the existing trees from the development and being unable to replace at the required, at the level required by the city's subdivision ordinance. City staff will be working with the developer to come up with a plan for either tree planting at other sites owned by the city or LGI, or a cash payment in lieu of tree planting. The Planning Commission, as Mr. Smallwood mentioned, motioned to recommend approval of the preliminary plat contingent upon the recommendations of the city planner, the city engineer, city staff, city council, and Planning Commission members. And then we do have representatives from LGI here this evening, if you have any questions.
Do we have any questions for staff or LGI?
What is, what is the issue with replacement trees?
The subdivision ordinance is a pretty lengthy section on tree replacement. And basically, if they take more than fifty percent, they have to replace it like per cal, per inch. And I believe it was eighty-one percent or something that they were taking. So it's just, we'll just have to kind of remediate that problem before we get going with the final approval. That'll be part of the developer agreement, so.
Okay. Do you have any idea how close we can get?
What was like?
Uh, yeah, not even close. Yeah. Because, because of the way the land is, they don't have a whole lot of extra green space or anything with that piece of land. So there's just not a whole lot of options. They can plant like two probably trees per yard, maybe another in the back or something, and we can maybe work on saving some trees in one of the areas. But they do need to take a lot of them, just for development reasons.
We're talking like hundreds of trees.
Yeah, I know, it's pretty thick.
Yeah. Yeah, if you look on an aerial map, it's fairly thick with trees.
Just reading through planning and zoning minutes, you know, they talked about some of their other development areas, the farmland areas. Is there a way we can put that into the contract to ensure that that happens? Or is that kind of a sticky situation?
The problem is, is that the other development isn't set in stone yet, I would say.
Got it.
Need to come up with a plan.
Good thing there's a lot of room at the regional park.
There is. And we have other city parks, I'm sure, that can use trees.
Yes, yep, sure, definitely. Further questions for city staff or LGI? Any questions for staff or LGI? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat application for the property located in the area known as Outlot A, North Ridge Sixth Edition.
And it'll have to be contingent with all of the...
Contingent on developer's agreement.
I'll go ahead and second.
Further discussion on the motion? I'll vote yes, Mr. Marslick. Yes, Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. City engineer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packets this evening is a memo related to the downtown improvements project, phase two. As you recall, that is a phase on the north side of the track. That, part of the project was split off, will be southern half, or phase one, due to some acquisitions and discussions with BNSF. Acquisitions been resolved, as you're well aware, and discussions with BNSF continue to go relatively well. We don't have the finalized agreement, but we're confident by the time that this project is ready to move forward, that'll be in place. So ultimately, what we're recommending is that council adopt the enclosed resolution, authorizing the advertisement to bids. With that, that would allow a bid opening to a screw on March twenty-second. Council would review those bids in April and allow construction to begin in May. So ultimately, that is the recommendation before you this evening and the resolution. So with that, I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions for Jared? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two-two-dash-zero-six.
I'll second.
No, sorry. Second by Nicole. Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Oh, yes, motion passes five zero to accept bids. Update?
Nothing specific to update, other than we continue to work with the contractor on phase one. They did some televising, reviewing that information. Everything continues to move forward, so it'll be a busy spring.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you.
Old business, sidewalk ordinance revision.
Mayor and council, included in the packet for this evening is the final version of the revised sidewalk ordinance that we have been discussing and working on with the city attorney for many months. The new ordinance states that the city will take over all repair of city sidewalks and alleys. The city, we have started to budget for this, but it will likely take a few years to determine how much money will need to be budgeted annually for repair and replacement. The Public Works Director will need to create a repair and replacement plan for sidewalks so we can determine which sidewalks are a priority in any given year in order to help with the budget process. Before you for consideration tonight is both the ordinance revision, ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-o-two, and the resolution twenty-two-two-dash-o-seven to authorize summary publication for the ordinance change.
Now, with the city taking over the repairs, that excludes if somebody does something to damage the sidewalk on their own, correct?
Correct. If, yeah. If they park a semi or something on the sidewalk, yeah.
To bring your tank home.
If you bring your tank home. But you're not allowed to park in the city, so.
Who would tow that away? Sheriff's office would tow my tank? Any questions regarding the sidewalk ordinance amendment?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-o-two.
I will second.
Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion passes five zero. And I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-two-dash-zero-seven, authorizing the summary publication of ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-zero-two.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion passes five zero. On to new business, Randy's Sanitation slash Republic Service date change discussion.
Mayor and council, city staff was contacted last week by Randy Sanitation Republic Services to request a change in the day they perform collection services within the city. And we have a representative from Randy's available here tonight to answer any questions and discuss the change. Can you come up, Matt? This is Matt Herman from Randy's Republic.
I'm Matt Herman with Randy's Republic Services. Nice to see you up here. Thank you for giving me some time this evening. One of the things that we are putting in place here this spring out of our Delano location is a fairly major reroute of all the work that we do. Really, as you all know, every industry right now is struggling with people. Labor is our number one challenge, specifically with its CDL drivers that we need. It's just a simplified market. So we are kind of redesigning how we do our work to provide our drivers better balance. You know, we have sixty routes on Tuesday, we have to have sixty routes on Friday. When they get imbalanced, we have days that are more difficult to cover. And the thinner our labor margin gets, the more difficult that situation gets. So we are, across the whole metro, redesigning how we do the work that we do. So we are, across the whole metro, redesigning how we do the work that we do to better align with the workforce that we have available. The changes that we're looking to take place, are looking to make, will take place in the first week of April. And this is going to impact a lot, a lot of communities. And again, our goal here is to line this up with our workforce so we can keep providing really good service. Having our crews being route-ready, meaning we have one driver, one truck, one route every day, that predictability really leads to a world-class customer experience. When we have to split routes and bring people in and have people cover, which is where we see errors happen. It's, it's normal, it, it happens, and we're trying really hard to avoid that and keep providing the same level of service that we have. Looking at our contract, as Ms. Bonnywell and I had discussions, our contract doesn't specify a collection day, doesn't provide restrictions on a collection day.
It does.
And doesn't really provide a set structure for how, the process for how we would change.
We did find a clause in the contract that does say that it would, it would be on Tuesdays, but at the discretion of city council could approve it.
Mutually agreed to.
Correct.
And for us, the mutually agreed to is the best way to always do this, which is why I'm here tonight. If we need to make a change, and you need to make a change, I think as partners, we're kind of in this together. And I wanted to, to bring this to your attention tonight, talk about the benefits for the city, for the residents, and talk about how we can make it happen. So the schedule, should we get on the path, would be changing the week of March 28th. So the city's currently serviced on Tuesdays, so we would collect all the trash on Tuesday, the 29th, and the regular collection day. And then we would also collect it on Friday, the 1st. And we would do the same thing the following week for that off recycle week. So we would double up on that service in that impacted week to make sure we have a pretty seamless transition. We'd send a postcard to every resident, we would use emails and phone numbers that we have to, you know, remind our phone callers through our call-in system, send emails, work with the city on social media. I think it is something that we do regularly. I think the residents will, I think it'll be a pretty quick adjustment. We all know how change, people handle change differently. There's been a lot of change in a lot of people's lives, and it's hard. I cheaply understand that. This is an important change for us, to be able to keep providing the service that we have been. So I, I, I open to any questions, anything we could do, any questions you have, need on what this would look like.
If you averaged everything out through a week, how many routes are you running on a typical day?
About 85.
And that's one route per truck per guy? Wow, okay.
And when we get into, when you get into challenges where we can't send that person out to their 800 stops, now, you know, we're, we're, we're working together, and Jim's taking half of Sandy's route at the end of the day, and we're scrambling, right? And, and when labor gets imbalanced with the work on a given day, it just gets harder. And it's, it's a less predictable experience for customers, and we want to do this reroute so that we can have that. Route-ready is our goal for our drivers. Every day, they know exactly where they're going, and it's the same driver, the same truck on the same. And Friday collection, I've been a Friday trash customer my entire life, there's nothing better than having empty trash cans to start with. It, it really does work well. I think a lot of people would enjoy it.
I'd talk to some of our residents about this, and there were some concerns about the Friday pickup, especially during the summer months. A lot of people head to their cabin, you know, take Friday off early, you know, then, you know, the garbage cans sitting around all weekend out in front of the house. I did have some concerns about, you know, security going forward, you know, somebody sees empty garbage cans in front of the house, hey, you know, here's an opportunity. And then also with it being as, as windy as it does get here, you know, cans tipping over, blowing down the street if nobody's there to pick them up. So that was kind of the discussion I had with some of my neighbors about it, and that was kind of the feedback I got. So a lot of them was like, yeah, change it, don't change it, that's fine. But that was some of the, the feedback that I got.
Anybody else have any feedback?
How, how many cities in general are being kind of rerouted and, and changed around?
Within our whole metro, so everything, we're hauling out of Eden Prairie, we're probably making changes in about 30 cities. A lot of it is in open market, and I think, personally, I have eight customers that are municipal contracts that we're, we're moving around. Some are day change, some are, some are week changes, and going from gray week to blue week to red week. So we've been doing a lot of, a lot of these conversations to try to get this plan set out and finalized as we move toward April.
So would it just be, would there be a grace period with a change of, say, a couple weeks after that, that if people put them out on Tuesday and they forget that it's supposed to be Friday, or they forget Friday because they thought it was Tuesday, is there a grace period on that, or?
I think we're going to be very flexible, and we want to ensure the change goes smoothly. So the first, the first part of that is going to be doing the double collection in those first two weeks. And if we have continued confusion, we could do that again.
Yeah, communication is key, as you well know, you know, so as long as everybody gets a card or some notification that the change is happening, I think, you know, it'll eliminate a lot of problems.
And then also, since we have you here, does, does Randy's do, or Republic do yard waste bins?
Yes.
Because I don't remember seeing that in our, in our contract in, in general, but I, I know that we don't have them now, but I just was curious.
I haven't seen it on their website either. They don't list us as a city that does yard waste.
Yeah, yeah, it's not in our contract to do it. I was just curious because that's...
It's just, it's a service that's available. We wanted to add it. I don't remember why we didn't have it.
Is, is there, would that be for every house, or is it select houses can do it and some can't, or is it pretty much a one size fits all, if something like that were to change?
We have both models of it. It's obviously easier for, it's easier for us to look at, you know, how you price this, or how much time is it going to take, looking at how many stops there are. If it's two people, it's a difficult service to price. If it's 20% of the city, well, then it's a route, and that's pretty easy. So we could look at different ways to do that. But yeah, cart-based, cart-based yard waste is really a popular service, and we have a lot of contracts where it's, you know, 120 bucks a month, or 120 bucks a year ballpark, and if you want the service, you just order it. And now that we're individually billing residents, opposed to running through utility bills, significantly simpler for them to just call us and say, hey, I want to get yard waste. And I do think residents today could call and get our open money. But we could work on, we could definitely work on that originally.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I know that we've had some issues in the past with our compost sites, so I, I was looking at that as a possible option for people if they wanted to order a bin and pay the yearly fee to have somebody come pick up their yard waste, so.
Then you're really going to like Friday service because your yard waste is empty for the weekend when it's time to pick up a little bit of work.
Are there any other questions for?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, you kind of touched on it, was just being flexible. Like, you know, we can do all the communication we want in the world, it's not going to be enough. There's definitely going to be people that miss those days, you know? Helping out these, these members of the community, like, coming out there and taking care of those, you guys are going to work with them on getting that done? Awesome. You know, and if they, if for whatever reason you guys can't get out there, and now their trash bin is overloaded with two weeks, can we just maybe come to an agreement on maybe that first month not charging them if they miss a day? Just to make things easy transition, because change is always difficult.
Our, our goal here is, is to get through this change as simply as we can for you and the residents. But we're not here to make eight bucks on an extra delivery, you know, an extra setup. So absolutely.
Will this affect the, the large trash bins for like the condos, or either of the bars or restaurants in town, their pickup days?
Not that I'm aware of right now.
Because I think they do all those on Mondays, so.
So right now, what we're, what we're looking at redividing is our residential route. I know they're doing some other changes with that large container routing. I don't have, I don't see that process, that's more of a individual customer discussion.
Yep.
Monday, Tuesday customers out there. I think there will be some of that, but certainly less, less than what we're talking about.
Do we have any further questions for Randy's/Republic?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion or a general consensus, a motion?
Could say a motion. Is this changing the contract?
You say you need a motion.
Yep, a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to go ahead and accept the change of date for trash pickup from Randy's from Tuesday to Friday.
One second.
Further discussion on the motion? Mr. Solars?
No.
Mr. Marzlik?
Aye.
How about yes, Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-1. Randy's will handle the communications on the change of date. So this was a resolution that I had asked to be put on the agenda as part of...
I do have some information.
Oh, do you?
I do, yeah. The infrastructure accountability resolution is a resolution that helps protect cities that are growing and developing from being responsible for the costs of growth and making current residents and businesses pay for those costs, but rather having those responsible for the growth pay for the infrastructure costs. Funding sources for larger streets and intersections to support new developments have historically come from infrastructure development fees. Cities currently do not have the statutory authority to collect the amount of infrastructure development fees that are necessary to promote growth within communities and pay for connecting streets that are not directly within a current development area. The resolution aims to support the local authorities in being authorized to collect local infrastructure development fees to fund municipal street improvements as a necessary component of growth. I don't know if you have anything other to say besides that?
The big thing that they had talked about in the one webinar that I was in is that just cities are being left with footing the bill for...
Major, major projects.
Yeah, big, big development coming in, and then, you know, roads take a beating with all the heavy trucks and machinery, and then they're left to pay for all of those repairs that need to be made instead of the person who caused the damage. So along the same lines as with our, our sidewalk ordinance, that if it's regular maintenance, the city takes care of it, but if somebody causes that damage, that they're kind of
Well, I'll make a motion to go ahead and accept resolution 2022-08 for infrastructure accountability.
I will second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marzlik?
Aye.
How about yes, Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, and then a copy of this gets sent to our legislators, right?
Okay, I was, I was going to ask you.
Okay, new city sign discussion.
Mayor and council, the mayor and I have discussed getting new signs for the city, which would be the LED light-up sign wherein we would be able to broadcast city information and use as a new communication tool with residents. I'd like to get the council okay to officially go out for estimates on a new LED light-up signs for the city. We're not sure if we're going to, one or two, just kind of starting to look into that. The cost would likely be upwards of $10,000 for each sign, depending on size, type, and resolution. I believe we are able to use the American Rescue Plan money the city received last year to pay for all or most of this project, since it is a communication upgrade. So if you guys just kind of consensus, yes, we can start looking at new signs to...
I think it'd be, especially since we can get, we can use the money that the federal government is giving us with the COVID relief stuff. I think it would be useful for the city, for, especially for the communication stuff. It'll help out the fire department, you know, Montrose Days, any of those groups in town that have an event going on, they can put it on there, and, and it's not a big deal. And, and the reason we'd looked at two signs possibly was putting a smaller sign next to City Hall, and then a bigger one on Highway 12 for, for better visibility. But certainly, it's not set in stone, the number of signs or the size of them, but it's just something, we're looking at all options to kind of make the communication piece better between the residents and the city.
I'm all for it. I think, I think Chief Tripoli would enjoy not having to put new signs on that sign.
Drag the big sign out? Okay, start looking at that.
Okay, DNR Declaration of Use Deed Restriction Approval for Regional Park Grant.
Mayor and council, the item under new business is the deed restriction that was recently completed by the city attorney as required by the DNR in order to receive our grant for the regional park shelter. This restricts the land to permanently, to be permanently managed and maintained for And I would just need a motion if you are going to approve that.
Could you just explain that one more time?
Yeah, so the regional park area, we have to restrict its land use to outdoor recreation in order to get our grant.
I will make a motion to restrict the land use at the regional park for recreational purposes only.
I will second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marzlik?
Aye.
How about yes, Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. That's, Jared, that's scheduled to start for when we get that in the spring then, or summer?
Yeah, so the plans are currently being developed for the shelter, and the construction schedule would be in 2022. I don't know if spring is realistic, but definitely shortly they're asking.
Just sometime this year it'll start down there, the shelter project?
Didn't it, was it part of the grant that it had to be finished this year?
It has to be finished by June of 2023.
June or September.
Yeah.
Make sure.
Yeah, of 2023. But we wanted to get going, just, you never know these days, so.
Thank you.
Okay, the added item E, Ugly Bar.
Mayor and council members, thanks for, we appreciate you coming up to this time tonight. I'm Sue Anderson, and the current owner, along with the husband of the Ugly Bar. We purchased it in the middle of December of 2021. I'll just start with a brief background. When we purchased the bar, they were currently using the charitable organization of the Montrose Lions to support the pull tags and the gambling, such as meat rifles on Friday and the pull tabs and things like that. We just received notice, literally last Thursday night, that the Lions license with the state for gambling is suspended effective February 28th. So we have literally, you know, two weeks, I guess we're saying, to somehow keep that part of our business alive, because obviously only owning it for a couple months, it's pretty critical, and we were unaware of this when we bought the situation, or bought the bar. We love it, everything, everything is great. However, I'm a little nervous about this, so make it brief. We put out the call and have, were highly recommended, given recommendations from the Delano Area Youth Gambling Management, for the gambling manager from the Delano Area Youth Hockey Association, Kevin Voss. So he is here tonight. We met for a little bit before our meeting, and Greg and I are feeling very confident and actually very excited for the stability, the experience. They're very well informed and able to provide us what we need in a very quick, timely manner upon your approval. I will let that... Um, I will let them speak as for their plans for us, if that's okay, um, and the plans for the city and for us also. Uh, and we hope that, uh, we can make this happen for us sooner than later, March 1st, so we're not, um, in any dire straits for this, but, um.
And, and not just for you guys either, because I know that I've had conversation with Brian from Jackie Bee's and he had said that-
Yes.
His, his plan is to, would be to use them as well, because he works with them for Bees on the River, so.
That is correct. I knew he couldn't be here tonight.
Yep.
That is correct. So it would be for both Montrose's bars that are currently here. Okay, so this is Kevin Voss and his wife Heidi, they both do this movement together, so. Do you have any, was there any questions about the background or anything that I know a little bit? I don't know a lot, but just.
I think we understand to this point.
Yep, yep.
Sorry.
No, you're good.
Um, I'm Kevin Voss, I'm with the Delano area youth hockey and gambling manager for them. Um, I was approached on, uh, Sunday, yesterday by, uh, Greg and Sue here about, um, about, potentially putting, uh, charitable gambling into the establishment because of the situation that they ran into. Um, that being said, Brian also contacted me on, I believe he called me, yeah, Friday, uh, same, with the same concern. Um, it's a major part of their business, um, not, not necessarily just because they get a check from us for gambling. People go out to the bars to gamble and the more they can gamble, the more they sit there and buy drinks and everything else. Um, I was told at one time years ago that there was a city ordinance saying that you had to be in the city of Montrose to have a charitable gambling license here, meaning, you know, the fire department or the Lions or something like that. Um, that being said, I don't know if that's true or not. This is what I was told years ago when Brian asked me years ago about it, he said, well, I can't do it because of this. So, um, a couple of things, uh, if, if we can get in here, we have potentials of, uh, giving back to the city. We do this in Rockford, we own, we have five sites that we run, um, one of which happens to be the city of Rockford or Red Vest, and we give 10% of all our proceeds, um, goes right back to the city. It's right, it's written right in their bylaws and it's just, it's a check I write every quarter and it just goes right to you guys and you guys disperse it however you want. Um, that being said, you don't have to do it, city of Delano doesn't do it, city of Rockford does, um, it's, it's, it's getting, yeah, it's really up to you, but it's getting more and more, we're seeing it more and more often.
And we would like to have Delano's owners, to have money in the, in this community.
Um, we are Delano area youth hockey, Delano area means, um, it's the Delano, Rockford school system, which you guys know, there's multiple kids that, uh, open and roll from Montrose into the Delano system. We actually have multiple players from Montrose that play hockey in Delano. Um, we actually go to Waverly, I know there's a couple of families in Waverly that go into Delano to play hockey. We stretch all the way out from Greenfield, Franklin Township, Delano, Maple Plain, Rockford. So that's why, that's the name, um, Delano area youth hockey. Um, so that's, you know, so that's all we really have is we just kind of, we can proceed forward with this if we can. We have paperwork that has to be signed by you guys before I can send it in.
So we, we were told about this ordinance or resolution as well, um, however-
I looked for resolutions.
Yes, I spent many hours in the last five, six days looking through the nineties, the mid-two thousands, through every resolution ordinance to find something and we can't find one. That doesn't mean there isn't one, but we can't find any record of it. Um, so, um, my thought was on-
It's an ordinance, I can check for that. I've been looking for resolutions because they said it was a resolution, so they're different. Um, I can, I'll look tomorrow to see if we have an ordinance.
But if we, uh, if we like this idea, I have an idea for a motion to kind of curtail some of that. Um, but if, is there any questions for the Delano youth, youth hockey?
I mean, one thing that I was going to ask is that, you know, when we want gambling organizations in here, it's what's going to come back to the city. So I appreciate the, the willingness to put that in there because that's, that's one of the main things that I look at. Lions does a, the Lions organization does a lot for this city, different organizations and stuff like that. It's something that we don't want to lose in the same sense. Um, but knowing that how vital restaurants are and quite honestly, the last two years have been detrimental to every restaurant bar in this state, we don't want to add it. I, I personally don't want to add another hindrance to them.
I agree.
Um, making it even harder for you guys to operate and stuff like that.
Because we don't go in, we get called like this from people and we don't step on anything that's scary.
We don't go in, yeah, we don't go in to steal, steal from other areas.
It's just not, not any of that.
Oh, and that's not what I'm inferring at all.
No, 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 but that's the same. So when someone comes to us like this and we're like, whoa.
Thing is, if, if, we don't do it, somebody else is going to, that's all.
And, and one thing I would, I would potentially like to see is, is working more with these organizations, you know, the fire department or Montrose Days Committee and stuff like that, on top of, you know, not only the, the give back portion and, you know, really, really make it a part of the, the, the community, you know?
And that could be from us as owners, and we, as soon as we get involved, you know, we can do that, um, even with the Sheriff's Department, Fire, um, so the money that we have here in advantage to be able to use, you might without any problem, you know, disappearing or whatever, if you catch track record, is why we brought them in and they can tell you, they have a whole organization that employs people that do this full-time.
I've heard good things about your guys' organizations, so.
We have, we have five locations we run at, um, if you want to know, it's Bees on the River, uh, Davestown Club, Delano Lanes and Entertainment Center, uh, Red Vest in Rockford, and then Norm's Way Side. We employ 25 people, uh, counting ourselves, um, so with that being said, eight, two more sites and we'd be, you know, potentially putting another, you know, six, seven, eight people on payroll, so.
With money that would come back from that, could we put that in a separate area of the budget to where that's just for donations to organizations within the community?
Uh, we will have to look into that. We never took gambling money straight from the Lions, it was always in the form of, uh, something like swing sets or-
Yeah, because that would, that would be something I would want to look at is that then we could, whatever that money comes in, it's in a separate account just for us to donate to organizations, whether it's Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Montrose Days, Lions themselves.
We have to talk to the auditor and make sure we can do that. And I believe we have to pass a resolution to allow them to do gambling in the city.
A resolution, not a motion?
I think it's part of, I, yeah, I think it's part of the application. That to be done tonight? We can't do that tonight. All right, okay.
We'd have to do the, the special meeting, but.
On the 28th?
It should be the day that they expire. It should be the day that they would expire.
Yep.
Yeah, you would have to expire with the gambling with their, and then you can-
Okay.
Never really.
Never been in this situation.
Yeah, if, if everything was-
So if we pass a motion and then it turns out we have to pass a resolution later on, we can come back and do that on the 28th, right? Or if we-
Motion isn't going to do anything, isn't going to allow us to do anything.
If we need a resolution.
Correct.
But if we wouldn't need a resolution, it would work? I don't, we'd have to talk to the lawyers, but.
I'm pretty sure we need a resolution because I just looked at the forms the other day when I was talking to Mr. Anderson about gambling.
Oh, at, at their various sites? Okay, um, well, I'm, I'm in favor of them coming into town and us looking into the resolution and all the paperwork for-
Yep.
-them taking over the gambling at Jackie Bee's and Ugly Bar.
Absolutely.
I have no issue with it either.
I don't, I don't see an issue with it at all.
Um, I would have to look at them closely, yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
No, we can't come any closer. There's an invisible wall.
We haven't gotten anybody in a long time.
That's why we got those three back there.
The shock could maybe end.
Watch, watch out for the bar boyer.
I'm used to all of it.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah, resolution number, so it does have to have.
How long would it take for turnaround from the state to get it back?
A situation like this, we might be able to push it real fast, it might be, it might be days, but again, you build with the state until they-
Right. Yeah.
And then we can-
Okay, yep, I can take these.
Yep, sure.
They're, because they're losing income when they're shut down, the state's losing money. Because we write the checks, uh, through, through, forty, forty-five thousand dollars.
Remember that, forty-four thousand dollars.
For the state.
For the state, the charitable game.
I'm on the phone with Scott all the time.
Is this your contact number, the six one two?
State takes more money than we do.
So the, so the minute my plan was with a double up resolve and we got signatures, I was going to send a pertinent email directly to our contact and kind of study the situation to hopefully get-
Wheels greased and quicker? Yeah.
Well, and if we needed to, we could call a separate special meeting just for that too, but, huh?
We already are having a special meeting.
I know, I meant to get the process moving quicker if that was the case, so.
We have to do some paperwork and research first, so.
I can be up and running in probably two days.
And you guys have e-tabs as well, right?
Yes, yes, I have everything that, that both Brian and Greg and Sue are looking for, so.
I, yeah, I think e-tabs would be a great addition to both of those restaurants, so.
Quickly, can we turn this around with another special meeting?
I, I honestly don't know, I need to start looking into the paperwork.
Okay.
And we're closed next Monday for the holiday.
Is that something Mary can help push through?
Probably not.
No?
I mean, no, I, it's just, um, it's just, we're just going to have to do another resolution like this if we don't have an ordinance saying that only Montrose organizations can do that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I gotta look for that.
In all honesty, we probably cannot do anything until their date, until the 28th.
Expires.
It expires anyways.
I'm going to say, but if we, so I would say it should maybe be dated till March 1st, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Fair enough.
But then we can turn her, I mean, I will send, I will send her a note, have it tonight when I get home and just kind of find out.
How quick would it turn around?
We can do, and hopefully we can.
I know I can't order any product or anything-
Yeah.
-that goes to any site until I have license in hand.
Mm-huh.
Let's stay loose.
The good thing about the product though is we can order again today, it'll be there, it could, it'll be there tomorrow, tomorrow. Our vendors are pretty fast, so it's just the e-tabs that probably won't come in right away, but shouldn't take too long.
Okay, we'll try and make it as painless as possible.
Perfect.
Do you want the phone number on that?
Yeah. So someone just let us know, um, we'll, I'll just tell that, someone know to what I know.
My card is on the table over there, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, uh, no open forum requests, other than that one that we moved to the agenda. Um, upcoming meetings, EDA was canceled, we have a special city council meeting, um, February 28th at 4:30, um, here at the community center. Um, we still are looking for applications for park and rec so that they can start having meetings again. Uh, planning and zoning, Wednesday, March 9th at 7:00 PM. Um, and a regular city council meeting on March 14th, and then the next EDA after that will be March 15th. Uh, acknowledgements?
I would like to acknowledge a special birthday today, uh, Councilwoman Andrioff. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday Nicole.
Thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-two.
Ooh, plus six.
I've been 32 for the last six years, so.
I'd like to acknowledge the three newly pinned firefighters. Um, it's a, a big accomplishment for them and, yep, them and the city. And then also our sheriffs for coming out today and always appreciate everything you guys do.
Um, along with the acknowledgements, I have a couple of things I just want to add from the meeting as well, but yes, uh, thank you to Sheriff Derringer for coming out and just talking with us and being available whenever, whenever we need something. So I know we've had conversations in the morning, at night, whenever something comes up, so. Um, and of course, acknowledge Diane for winning firefighter of the year. Um, and then welcoming Coco back to the fire department after a few years that he was off. And then, um, just kind of summarizing that, you know, the, the city's looking at getting electronic signs and that, uh, if you would like a yard waste bin, to call Randys and they can set that up for you, so. Anything further?
Nope.
Look for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Aye.
I'll second. Uh, Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Marslick?
Aye.
How about yes? Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero, we're adjourned.
Need a photo of all of you.